A motion to move to work session.
No, we can do that now. We've adjourned the meeting. We're into a work session now.
I would just like to make a statement. I've been on this council since nineteen ninety-nine. And over the past years, we had to make some decisions. We hadn't raised taxes since two thousand and three, I think. And we was elected to make decisions that is not going to make everybody happy, to make the tough decisions. We had several options on the board, but we keep on passing it, kicking the can down the road. But we're gonna have to decide what option we think is what's best for the community. You know, things went up, you know, not only here, you know, across the country, here in the state, in the city. And you just can't do the same thing you did ten years ago, five years ago. And, you know, I don't think anybody are on to raise taxes. But between now and the next two, two years, we're gonna have to do something. If we continue to keep on pushing, pushing it back, don't want them to do that. I mean, if I'm gonna raise taxes, I want to explain to the people why, and I think they will understand that you have to raise them, and the reason why, I think they accept it a whole lot better because we want the roads fixed, we want police cars, we want a lot of things done. But you just can't do it based on the same money that we got coming in.
I do want to say that I ran the formula on where I live. And I think I'm pretty average. Thirteen dollars a month, a hundred and fifty-six dollars a year to be able to get and do some of the things that not only have we promised, but we've said. And that is a substantially less tax increase than what the county did a couple of years ago. And if you know where it's going to go, we've got the budget, you see it. I'm, I'm struggling that we're just cutting everything off and almost, I feel like, kind of taken away. Everything is, costs more now, everything is more expensive. So we're supposed to say, well, keep paying the taxes you already are, and we're just gonna leave it how it is.
And the people we're gonna hurt the most are the city employees. The folks who pave the streets, the folks who keep us safe, the folks who put out our fires. If we keep kicking this can, they're the ones getting hurt. And that's on you, council members, if you can't make up your mind.
No, I'm not.
You're gonna hurt the people.
I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I'm not in favor of raising taxes.
Nobody is.
We can do this.
We're here to make a decision.
Council members?
No, you can't.
Let's wait till we get recognized. Councilman Lawrence?
I'd like to comment and, and, and maybe Bobby wants to talk about the sheet he sent out. First of all, on the total expenses, the FY twenty-three shows eighty-seven million dollars. We have the state audit for that year, and it shows eighty million dollars. The difference in that, the seven million dollar difference, is a transfer out. And there is a little maybe debate over whether a transfer out is expense or not. And my understanding from accounting is a transfer out is not an expense to the county transfer out from. It is expense to the county you go to. Be as it may. If you take the FY twenty-three number and take out the road repair, seven million, it gets you, or add it in, it gets you to the eighty-seven million, which is on Bobby's report. Okay, you gotta do the same thing these next, next two years. And it moves one of them from ninety-one to eighty-eight, and then the ninety-eight is moved to ninety-six. The reason I said that is, is to point out that we'll be going from eighty-seven million to ninety-six million in two years, which is a significant amount of money.
And look at everything else and how much it's jumped in the past two years.
I think it's about eighteen point nine percent. It hasn't jumped quite that much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
From a bit of historical perspective, going back a couple of years, you know, we, uh, if we had kept the one ninety-something tax rate that we had at the time, what would have been, Bobby, about an eight million increase in our revenue? Bobby had a great idea to reduce the rate, earmark some of that leftover for street resurfacing, and then take the rest and absorb it into our expenses. One of the reasons our expenses are higher is because, you know, about a year and a half, I think it was, we finished up our pay study and elected at the time to give city employees a raise to get them in line with what the, the market value was for their positions. Okay? We kept the tax rate down. We went too far low with the tax rate, and now the bills come due for that. The thing is, do you want to cut costs, or do you want to pay the people what they're worth? Especially our first responders, where we recently voted to raise the police minimum to fifty thousand plus all the stipends for our JFD people. So just, the bills come due for the raises that we gave out a couple of years ago. That's a big part of this, and I would like you to be mindful of the fact that the people working on behalf of the city of Jackson work hard and deserve to be paid a fair wage.
Councilman Lawrence?
This is, I agree with you. And this is why we've been asking for a, a head count and also a, a dollar figure of how much is total wages and how much are the wages going up each, each year? That's just information we need to have. It will give us ammunition to make, if, if something drastic is needed to be done. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say the word because I oppose it. Also, if you'd like to look at the control, at the controllers' audits, going back about fifteen years, I'll give you a few of them. Two thousand nineteen, seventy-three million, this is General Fund. Seventy-three, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-six, eighty, and then all of a sudden it jumps to ninety-one, and then to ninety-eight. So this is not a normal increase. This is well, well, well above inflation.
This, Larry, shows the salaries and what they've been, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, and the variance. And some of this, you've got to also realize that people were taken from certain areas and put into new places, like the three-one call center. You have that information.
I, I agree. It's just not in a summary. I, I, I spent the weekend working on some of these reports, but I did not have the time to go through.
So you want someone to summarize the facts for you?
Yes, absolutely.
When you have them right here.
That's, that's exactly what the Budget Committee has to do. Give us the facts in a, a summary. We're not up here to make individual line items decisions. We should be looking at the overall total budget.
That is this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll say it again. We've made a promise after that pay study to pay the city employees and pay them what they were worth.
Mr. Chairman?
Keep that in mind.
Councilmember Wallace?
I was here Thursday. I've had several calls, listened to lots of people. I want to get off the table that council members are looking at employee salaries. I could be so far against that. I want to make that clear. What I do stand for is, what I have always stood for, is how do we make the public feel safe, and how do we get them to where they want to be? That is police, fire, and infrastructure. I do stand, and I will firmly stand, that I want to see a plan for our roads until I am comfortable passing this budget. I feel like the taxpayers need that. I think if we explain to the taxpayers in a year or so that we have a deficit. But we cannot look to the taxpayers now and say, we want a tax increase, when I feel like our city has not done the best job that it can do. We have improved on our trash. We have improved on the calls when they come. We're, we're working for every person, the homeless shelter, the animal shelter. But let's do a good job for everyone. Can we not take a little bit of time? The Budget Committee calls, um, Chairman?
Yeah.
Or, anyway, Frank McMinn is the president of that. We can even have an outside person come in and help us. I'm not saying take away from the employees. That's wrong. Let's get that off the table, or I will not stand for that. But I have to feel comfortable that there's something in the budget for people of the city, of my district, of all of your own districts, that we have roads, that we have good roads. It is a city's responsibility to make the public feel safe and to make the public be able to have a safe means of transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Bobby?
If, if I could, specific to the discussion back and forth, good questions, good discussion. I do think there's a point of clarity. There's a couple of things that you, that you, you all have kind of hit on in different ways that I think is important to the discussion. You, you guys, I gave you this a few days ago. You may not have it with you now. If you go back and look at sales tax revenue, and I'm just gonna start in, in twenty twenty. Total sales tax revenue in twenty twenty was just right at twenty-seven million dollars. In twenty twenty-one, sales tax revenue jumped to over thirty-four million. In twenty twenty-two, to over thirty-seven million. And in twenty twenty-three, to over thirty-nine million. Well, our sales tax revenue this current year that we're in now, twenty-four compared to twenty-three, it's gonna be flat with the twenty-three numbers, maybe up one percent or something like that. The projections for sales tax revenue that we've been provided by the state for twenty-five, over twenty-four, are flat, maybe up eighth tenths of one percent, you know, increase. Now, the reason that's significant is some of the transfers that Councilman Lawrence alluded to in each of these years. What this, and this is my understanding of what the city did when we had those revenue flows, right? And I think everybody recalls all of the recovery and incentive funds that were circulating in the economy at that time, with businesses, with individuals. There was the panic buying that drove the sales tax increases in revenues. What this, in my version of what the city did, as has been alluded to by more than one council member so far, rather than sitting on that, those reserves and those fund balances, the city elected to invest those. And it pretty much was invested in, in two primary areas. One would be the compensation study and the related salaries. And the second, almost the, the three years that Councilman Lawrence referred to, the transfers from the General Fund to the capital outlay fund, that's what contributed to the pretty substantial aggressive repaving program that we've experienced the last two, two or three, or, or three years. So, you know, I've shared this before a couple of times. We were fortunate to be able to do that. We were not the only city that was able to make decisions like that. You know, we, by, by doing that, the way that most cities, at least our size, address infrastructure, road repaving, capital asset acquisition, is through financing of some type, be it capital outlay notes, or bond financing, or private placement, or whatever. And that allows you to recognize or amortize the cost related to that over a number of years as the asset, long-lived assets, right? So you can spread, you can spread that cost out. Now, we did, I think the last debt issue we had, if I recall, we had one in nineteen or twenty, and then we, we had a capital outlay note in twenty-one, if I remember right, for police department cars. But we haven't had any financing of capital assets in a couple of two or three years now. And that's how most municipalities fund capital assets. And I know there's a lot of discussion about infrastructure in the future and stormwater drainage issues and so forth. You know, we, for, I think there was one year, if I recall correctly, I don't know if it was in the current administration or the last year of the previous administration, where there was a small amount of tax dollars for, just a few cents, if I remember right.
Three or four cents.
Yeah, that, that went to the capital outlay fund. But we don't fund the capital outlay fund through property taxes. Basically, the way it's been funded the last several years is, uh, some of the, some of the revenue that the General Fund was fortunate enough to realize the last few years, transferring that to the capital outlay fund. Along with during the COVID, post-COVID area, era, there were grants. Our city, other cities receive infrastructure grants for street repaving. That, my point is, that has been a lot of the cost increase. And, uh, and I, I think when you look to the future, you, you kind of just realize you need to think of, think of those particular facts. Because those sales tax revenues will not replicate itself moving forward, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I just want to.
Councilmember Holt, then Stovall, then Lawrence, then we'll come back.
I'm just curious as to where exactly we're gonna trim this fat and what y'all thought we were gonna trim the fat, because we could trim it here right now with everybody here.
I do want to remind council, section twenty of the charter authorization, the authority of the council is to appropriate all funds and make the assessments of the cost and levy taxes. So it is ultimately the council's responsibility to pass or, and create the, well, not create, but pass the budget and appropriate the funds. So we established a budget committee in twenty nineteen to assist the council in that. But I do think it's, the end of the day, it is the council's responsibility. I think, Stoke, Councilman Stovall, next, and Councilman Lawrence.
Yeah, so for me, it's, it's real simple. Why would not vote to pass the current budget? And that is because it has nothing to do with funding our law enforcement. It has nothing to do with giving raises to employees that need raises. The rainy day fund is just that. It's an emergency fund. We're dipping, would be dipping into it three million dollars. We cannot keep doing that. We can do this without raising taxes, but our roads are terrible. We have to fix our roads. And I just second everything that Councilwoman Wallace has said. We can do it without raising taxes. We can fix the roads. But we're really gonna have to look at it.
Councilmember Wallace? I'm sorry, no, Lawrence, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're all in agreement with these things. What I'm asking is for facts to make an informed decision. I'm gonna repeat something. The General Fund budget, not counting transfers in and out, and I'm gonna talk about those again in a minute, it's gone up six, fifteen point three million dollars in two years. You know, that's, that's, my question is, okay, I'm not saying any of that was misspent. How was it spent? Well, some was spent on wages. How much? You gotta go through that many pages and add stuff up. We need a summary for the council saying wage increases have been this much. And you hires, our total employment has been this much. So it's not we're saying we need to do anything as far as cut this or cut that. Maybe so. We just need the facts before you can do it. And so far, I don't have the facts in, in, that I can see. I want to talk about these transfers in and out one more time, so everybody understands it. In eighty-five, excuse me, twenty-three, FY twenty-three, we show eighty-seven million dollars. Seven million dollars of that is a transfer out, which reduced that down to about eighty-one. Leave it in or leave it out, just so you compare apples to apples. Let's go over to the year we're talking about now. The expense budget is ninety-eight seventy-seven proposed. Of that, two point two million is, is transferred out. By the way, that's the homeless shelter, if you wonder what it is. My point is, you cannot count expenses twice. There are a expense for one department. You have revenue in somewhere and revenue out, but you can't, anyway. But if you do want to put, go do that, put them in both places.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I've gotten so many new thoughts in my head. I'm gonna have to go back to the thought that I originally wanted to discuss, but that is, takes them back to infrastructure. I don't want us to complicate. I feel like we're getting in so many different directions. But my point is, what I have asked for, for five years, and that is a plan, three, five, and ten years. I believe very highly in Mr. Arnold. He's proved that to me over and over. But what I would like to do is dipping into this fund, looking at our total assets, give me a plan for how and where we're going to pay for those roads. I do understand municipalities are different, that we do have to look at this. We have to look at capital fund one way, we have to look at expenditures this way. But just show, give me a plan. Show me we're gonna take ten million dollars, and that is going to help maybe three roads. I have all of the information from the past three years of the road conditions in everyone's district. And if you take one-fourth of a mile times the asphalt, the public would be shocked at how much that costs. So all I'm really asking is sit down with us and show us all the money is still the same. Tell me how much money we're gonna need to borrow, but how much is that gonna get done? Work with the engineer, work with stormwater, work with the planning department. Let's work together, and how far is this going to get us? Then, in a couple of years, the public might understand, hey, it's worth two more cents or one more cent. But we got to have a plan. If, I feel like the public deserves a plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, I understand totally, you know, you saying we need this money for roads, we need this money for the police cars, and then we keep on talking about the salary. The money got to come from somewhere. Either you're gonna borrow the money, we're gonna raise taxes, or we're gonna leave what it is. Because if you don't raise taxes or borrow the money, we're gonna still be in the same place in the next couple of weeks. I don't want to raise taxes. I mean, our district that I represent, it's the last thing I want to do. But at this point, we're gonna have to do something, because like I said, we're gonna keep on pushing. I mean, if you look around us, the cities around us, small cities, Lexington, other places, they're raising taxes. Nashville, Memphis, they're raising taxes. I mean, you got a, the pandemic we just got over. We, we'll suffer from that, because like Bobby said, we had grant money, we had some things that was able to assist us, so we'll be able to do things that we needed to do. But now, like I said, we are placed now, we're gonna have to do something. And we continue to push it back. You know, you said two years, whatever, it's gonna be getting worse if the revenues, if money's not coming in like it need, you know. So we're gonna have to make a decision after we take a look at it the next week or two, going back and taking it back to the Budget Committee. We could still have to come up with an option, and the same option that we have right now is either you're gonna borrow money, or we're gonna raise taxes, or we're gonna keep it the same. It's gonna have to be one of the three. I mean, we're gonna have to do something. I mean, you know, you, you're gonna have to, that's borrowing money from myself, that's what I'm saying. When we do that, we're still gonna have to make a decision, and we got these same options right here today. So when we take it back, either we're gonna cut spending as far as our employees, or we're gonna borrow money from the rainy day fund, as you say, or we're gonna raise taxes. Do we want to raise taxes? That's probably the last thing we want to do. But I think if we explain to people that this money will go towards to make our roads a better place, I mean, better than what they are. They will understand that. But we can't continue to say we're not gonna do it in, you know, a year later, two years later, then you're gonna have to raise taxes. Well, we might can do it at fourteen or fifteen percent now, to, you know, for a type of cushion. It's gonna have to be more laid on down the road if we continue to push it back. So I just hope we could just come up with a solution and stop just kicking the can down the road. We're gonna have to make the decision.
Councilmember Meem?
I made my motion because we spent five and a half hours last week, came up with nothing any different.
Add it to the budget.
We added eight thousand. So it's like, we didn't make any progress. We didn't have a better understanding of how we fund it, how we can work with Bobby and, and have capital projects. And the public is concerned about roads, they're concerned about safety. And so it's like, we can sit here and argue all day long. My suggestion, take it back to the Budget Committee. We didn't have a long time. I couldn't even open the budget last, last, in our last meeting on Tuesday.
Are you the president of the Budget Committee?
Chairman, chairman. And the duties of the committee is basically, by the way, committee members, or if you want a copy, I have a copy of the bylaws. The committee shall be provided with contractual, operational, capital, budget, other financial information as it may deem necessary for its work, and such information shall not be unreasonably withheld. The committee shall advise on the city budget process, facilitate the production of a publicly available budget document. So my point is, get it back to the Budget Committee, have something that we can better understand, that we can come back at some point, even if we, it does go into the month of August. We have something that we will be comfortable with, and the public will trust us a little bit more with how we handle the financials.
Councilman Lawrence?
I just want to make clear that, again, I'm not for or opposed to any of these things. I'm just trying to get some facts out here. And people asking me is that if you gain fifteen point two million dollars, fifteen point two million dollars in two years and not one penny for roads, something's wrong.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to remind council that the budget that we set is in essence a target. We can generally hit that target when we aim for it. However, it is still to some degree a living document. It's going to change little by little throughout the course of the year. It's a har, hard thing to do to get it a hundred percent perfect, how you budget it. In regard to capital, I know that's missing, and I know there are a lot of capital needs that we hope to fund ASAP. Thing about capital is, we can add it in anytime, and we likely will have to, because in order to do any kind of change to hit the operational request, there's not gonna be anything left over for capital. So try not to get too hung up on that, because we will have to address it at some point in the near future, even if not directly in this FY twenty-five budget.
May I, may I say something regarding this? And I want to go back and ask Councilman McMinn a question in just a few minutes. But I like to put a button on the time requirements for this. Councilman Lawrence, Lawrence, is, is correct about that August deadline. I, I contacted, in fact, I got a copy, I got a copy for other councilmen to see, from the Controller of the Treasury, the Tennessee Budget Manual for Local Governments. And I'd like to just take a minute, one minute, to read this into the record about the time parameters. And it says this under continuation and extension. And like, again, I got copies for other board, committee members. For your budget document to be relevant, timely adoption is essential. However, state law recognizes there will be circumstances when the governing body is not able to adopt the budget prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. Nevertheless, if the budget adopt, if the adopted budget is not submitted to our office within two months of the beginning of the fiscal year, the budget cannot be approved. Then it goes on to say, for municipalities. Pursuant to the municipal budget law of nineteen eighty-two, if a budget ordinance is not adopted prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, the appropriations for the last fiscal year become the appropriations for the next fiscal year, until the adoption of a new budget ordinance. So it's my hope that since the council has, has voted to give it back to the Budget Committee, that we can put some time limits on it now and not wait to August to, to submit this, but just to do it at once. Because I want to take care of the employees too, who have a raise that's due starting in the next fiscal year. And I don't want them to have to wait until August thirty-one to see whether or not they get that raise, and whether it'd be retroactive back to July one. So I would hope, Mr. Chairman, that, that you would put, or if you could do it today, or, or give us the time limit today, or whenever, but that you would do it as soon as possible, so that the council can meet for the first reading. I know we, we meet on July the second or third. I don't know if there's enough time for you or not, but if it's not, I would hope that you could do it as quickly thereafter so that we could have a special call meeting, so that we don't have to delay this a long time.
You're correct. And yes, we would have a call meeting. We would work with the mayor and, and the Budget Committee.
You can look at it a hundred different times. You can, in and out of committee, all you want. At some point, we gotta make a decision.
Exactly.
Plain and simple.
Mr. Chairman?
Gotta do something. It's our job.
I hate to throw a wrench in this, but are there projects? Is there a way to bring one project forward and approve that or look at that? I think council, I think we need to look at, we're gonna have to address, I'll just be blunt, the men's shelter. If they do not get their funding, what is that going to do? Can, I don't see legal counsel, but I'm asking, is there a way to look at one item to not put this in detriment?
That's what it's about.
I think we need to, I mean, Mr. Chairman?
I think, well, I'm, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Thinking through it. I think the short answer would be yes. It would have to be on two readings on appropriate for the, to move it into FY twenty-four capital. I think, I think that's the short, short yes, that, you know, legal counsel's not here to make sure we can, what we can do. That's a question we have to just double check on, but I, I think that's the process. I don't know. I don't know if we, the council goes to vote on things beyond July, June thirty, what that'll do. That's, that's some questions that we'll have to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
When are we gonna make for budget? When are we gonna trim the fat?
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Mr. McMinn, Councilman McMinn, you've got the bylaws for budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I would hope that we could come together. But my hope would be we're planning for engineering, for department heads. We don't want to be unfair to anyone, but again, I want to see that we can show the public how. We don't want to be unfair to anyone, but again, I want to see that we can show the public, hey, we're short this much money. But we've got to pay for this, and here's how we're going to do it. And we can always move those funds around later. But I'm uncomfortable with that. I've always been uncomfortable when we transfer money around. Maybe I need to be a little more intelligent in that, but I feel like I'm very good with just looking at numbers, knowing where we are. So if we could come up with a plan quickly, where we can say, yes, we're going to have to borrow $9 million. Yes, $9 million will only do X for our infrastructure. But yes, this will allow us to keep the raises for our employees. I would like for us to look for the one employee that I mentioned on Thursday that I feel like is underpaid. But again, we just need to come together, have a plan, and be able to hold it up to the public and say, this is what we're spending, this is what you're going to get for your money, and this is what we're paying on roads, and this is what the people at the city are making, and let's move forward.
Bobby.
Mayor.
Can we call a budget meeting maybe as early as tomorrow?
No.
No.
Forty-eight hours. The agenda has to be published 48 hours prior to the meeting.
But the chairman of the Budget Committee can do it. It's, anytime you have to.
Could we call it for the time that we had scheduled a, a city council meeting?
Forty-seven hours and 12 minutes.
No, it's, it would, because there's some money now for Thursdays. Yeah, that would, that would be enough time. As long as we get the agenda published before tomorrow morning by nine o'clock, then.
But we need to remember, we got people outside of the council that is on this Budget Committee, that we got to make sure they have schedules too. I mean, so we got to, you know, respect their schedules, because.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, even if we do, we need to probably send some out and see what's available.
Yeah, I'm going to have Marquesha maybe send out to the other members what their availability is, and then make a determination on the next scheduled meeting from that.
I feel like the main thing really is the homeless shelter. And if it, that's where we're at, and that's all it's about, why can we not do this right now?
That's not what it's about for me. I'm for the homeless shelter. I've said that. I've put it in emails. I'm happy to say it on record right now. I will be for the homeless shelter today, tomorrow, and four years from now, when I might not find people that will actually help me, help those people.
But I'm not really talking just about you. I'm talking about a consensus of.
I want to go on record saying that.
Why things are going the way they are.
For me, it's infrastructure, and for me, it is not, I do not have the ability to tell the city and my constituents that I have worked so hard for, for five years. I can pull out a few of them in this audience and people that have called me to say, I can't drive down my road. It's not, I would like to see us do better.
I want to ask you a question, though, Mr. Arnold. I just thought about that. In, in looking at this over the weekend, I noticed, and I can't find it right now in front of me, but there was in the capital request, there's a, a $1,150,000 for bike and pedestrian. Is there, and I don't know why that has a priority over streets. And maybe it'd be a good reason for it. I'd need to hear the reason why. But that money, if that money's stricken out, that money could be put in capital if the council so desires. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know why? I got you. And do you know why this money is, is listed? Do we just have to put it in there, or?
It was, it was carryover from contracts that have already been awarded.
All right. So if you take, so if you take that out, would the city be liable for something?
We had to, we had to look and see what contracts we've, we've awarded based on. Some of those are designed. Some of those construction contracts have already been granted. We had to go back and look and see exactly what contracts we've entered into.
Okay. Because if that could be done, to me, bike and pedestrian, that's more of an amenity. And that your streets is more of a necessity.
I understand.
And that you should have more priority.
That don't have cars, have to rely, have to rely on sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, but I, I still think, I still think the streets are more of a priority. And in, in looking at this, I, I just still, I stand by what I say.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to offer this as a suggestion, but, Mr. Chairman, you're the one that I'm asking for advice. Going back to the homeless shelter, I believe they had a deadline of June 30. Could we quickly allow Ms. Kirk, with the help of Carrie Henson and our attorney Louis Cobb, to find out how we can proceed as quickly as possible, or what detriment it could be to them holding up the homeless shelter?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to see, you know, if that's the will of the council to do that, to see if we can appropriate those funds. I was going to see how we can do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Lawrence.
Yeah, I want to stick on record, I am 100% for the homeless shelter, not 99. I'm 100% for the homeless shelter. My question is, are we using?
Would you mind if I finish, or would you like to take over?
My concern is not the homeless shelter. It's the money we're spending. $143,000 per person, if you use 25 people, and versus the, the cost of it. So I'm not, we, we got to do something. When I was called by some business people about the homeless shelter, I said, it's not good enough to say you're against it. You've got to come up with what you can do in place of it. And that's what I'm looking at now, is this, are we getting in the biggest bang for our buck on this? We, we need the homeless shelter. The programs they've got scheduled for it are tremendous, because it could change people's lives, and it's hard to put a dollar figure on that. But if I could serve 25 people or 100 people for the same amount of money, I'm going to pick the 100 people. And that's all I'm asking, is looking and see, what can we do on the cost of it?
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to?
No, we're not in a, we're not in an official meeting. We're in a work session, so it can be no motions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you again then for looking at the homeless shelter, and you're going to get back with us, and I feel better about that. Thank you.
So, again. Mayor.
Okay, yeah.
Can we look at scheduling a budget meeting for Thursday at nine?
I mean, you can. I think we just discussed with Marquesha, getting with the, the members that aren't council members to see their availabilities. But we don't want to have a, schedule a budget meeting that no one can attend other than three council members.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Don't we have the 27th already?
Yeah, we, we have that there, but if there's, there's no, if it goes back to the Budget Committee, then we'd have to get the Budget Committee to review it and make their recommendations. And that's, that's what Councilman Meem is talking about, but we need to make sure. What we don't want to do is have, schedule a budget meeting that only the council members that are on the Budget Committee can be present at, and we don't have a quorum. So we need to make sure that our other, our other Budget Committee members can be present there, or at least make a quorum.
Mayor, I've also asked some other outside folks to join us that might have some expertise too on city planning and budgeting.
And that is approved in your bylaws?
Mm-hmm. It is.
All right. Anything else from council?
I move we'll join.
Join the work session.